Douglas County Commissioner Danny Tarkanian today on Locked On A's.
You are Locked On A's, your daily podcast on the athletics, part of the Locked On Podcast Network, your team every day.
Welcome to Locked On A's, part of the Locked On Podcast Network, your team every day. I am your host, Booney, one name, all passion. Thank you for making Locked On A's your first listen of the day. I'm from the Bay Area and I've been a diehard A's fan since 1981. This isn't just another A's podcast. This is the most informative and insightful show on the A's period. We cover the A's every single day, breaking down games, delivering the latest team news and giving you deep thoughtful analysis you will not find anywhere else. If it's happening in Sacramento or in Las Vegas, we have got you covered. We are free and available wherever you get your podcasts, including YouTube. And please hit that subscribe button wherever you are following the show. When you hear the name Tarkanian, it's impossible not to think of the UNLV Run and Rebel Basketball Team, the dynasty that dominated the late seventies, eighties and early nineties with Jerry Tarkanian, or as we all know him, Tark the Shark at the helm. From legendary teams to that iconic towel he always seemed to be biting down at. Jerry Tarkanian left a mark on basketball and the city of Las Vegas. Fast forward thirty years and Las Vegas has transformed into a global sports mecca, home to the Golden Knights, the Raiders, the Las Vegas Aces, potentially a brand new NBA franchise and soon the A's. But what does this meteoric rise mean for the city and its people? Today, we are joined by someone who knows both the legacy of the Tarkanian name and the evolving identity of Nevada better than most. Danny Tarkanian, former UNLV player under his father and now Douglas County Commissioner, joins us to share his unique perspective. We will dive into the hot button topic of the A's move to Las Vegas, why it makes sense, what it means for the community and how stadium financing impacts schools and public services. But it's not all business. We also take a moment to reminisce about the late Jerry Tarkanian, a visionary who built more than just a basketball program. He built a legacy. So grab a seat, settle in and get ready for an engaging conversation that blends sports history, civic insight and a little bit of nostalgia. Let's get started. Danny, 2028 Las Vegas A's are supposed to have their stadium completed. What is your feeling on the new stadium? Is this something you want to see happen and is it a good thing?
Yes, I'm really excited about having it and yes, it's a good thing. You hear this all the time when there's a taxpayer funded stadium anywhere in the country. Rightfully so, people say, we shouldn't be paying to build a stadium for all these billionaires. And look how much money they're making now. They just sold the Celtics for $6 billion. They had $370 million four twenty years ago. They're making a killing and they're absolutely right. The problem is this, the professional sports brings a lot to a community, but more so to a place like Las Vegas that relies and thrives on tourism. So even if this was a regular town, I'd be thankful, but for Vegas, I'm really excited about it.
They're talking about the stadium, it's supposed to be about 32,000. And first of all, do you think they're going to get the 32,000 for 81 home games? Do you think the attendance will be there? Do you think the appetite will be there?
You know, I just, just comparing to what's happened with the Raiders. The Raiders sell out almost all their games and a lot of times there's a minority Raider fans there. Or maybe not a minority, but 30, 40% of busy teams. Because people all want to come to Las Vegas and visit and they could use their vacation time to go see their favorite baseball team, whether it's the Red Sox or whoever else the A's are playing. So in a normal town, they may not draw that many, but when you're talking about bringing in fans from the opposing teams, yeah, I think they will. But the big key is this, okay, Las Vegas keeps reinventing its footprint to make itself bigger and better and actually more, more expensive, but more successful too. And it started from the old mob type of casinos to the family casinos to the nightlife and all of this. Now it's become a sports entertainment capital world. And it all started basically with the summer league basketball leagues that started coming around. For decades now, you've had hundreds of teams, maybe close to thousands of teams coming in and playing basketball this summer. Then you saw the colleges have all the tournaments there. Now they have the NBA coming in there with the summer league and then you have the Olympics teams practicing there. So it started that, then you brought in the Golden Knights. And most people thought, come on hockey in Las Vegas, no way that's gonna work. That they paid 250 million for their franchise after the first year was worth $1 billion. Now that was the only one of the stadiums that I'm aware of. I bet it's happening in Las Vegas, very few around the world that it was, that it was paid for with private funds. It was paid by the MGM hotel, which is making a killing from because it's bringing 20,000 people through their casinos every single game. I can tell you this, people will come out, whether it's tourists or regular Las Vegas people, will come out and see them. It's gonna be harder because there'll be basketball too. An NBA franchise is gonna come, so they're gonna be splitting dollars between all of the different franchises, from hockey, football, baseball, basketball. But because of the tourists that are gonna come to it, I think that it will continue to thrive. But I'll support them when they come to Las Vegas. There is, Las Vegas, the only downfall for the A's is this, it's, it's really probably the least most popular team coming there because they'll bring up a big name NBA franchise and then they have to compete against three other sports franchises. So it's gonna be tougher, but 32,000 fans, a lot easier to fill in 60, 65 in a football game, even though there's a lot less games.
They're doing a smart thing though. Their start times for games, which usually in the West Coast is seven, 7:30, they're starting at four o'clock in Vegas, which is interesting, which I think is a, a good move. And it avoids some of the competition with shows at night and the other teams you're talking about, so.
And that's very true. And a lot of, a lot of the workforce isn't the typical nine to five in Las Vegas. So you have a lot of people that are working, that late shifts and so forth. So starting a game before it won't be a problem for them.
Why does Vegas make sense for a, for a sports market? Let's say they don't sell out, what's other opportunities? How can they make money? Is, is casino sponsorship, is corporate sponsorship a big deal?
Yes, I mean, because they're buying suites and they're paying a lot of money to have the high rollers come to the games. My dad, people used to get, like, looked down on my dad because he never paid for a bill in Las Vegas. Because he got, he got so many tickets to the game and he'd give them to this one guy who handed them out to all the high rollers at the casinos and the casinos would then let us go eat there for free all the time. So there's, there's an advantage of having that type of a clientele. When you have somebody coming in betting hundreds of thousands of dollars or a hand or a roll in some of these other gambling stuff, they're gonna, they're gonna pay to let them go to the games and not care what it costs because they're making a buck in gambling.
Danny, you're the Douglas County Commissioner right now, correct?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question. Why is Nevada getting things done, which seems like just at a speed of light and so much easier than let's say California and Oakland? I mean, there's big controversy on why the A's are leaving Oakland. I, they're blaming it on the owner. I think a lot of it has to go, excuse me, all of it needs to go on the, on the city for what I found out. Why is it night and day between the two?
Well, there's different type of political philosophies in the tax base. You don't have to pay state income tax. So if you come to Las Vegas and play in Las Vegas, you're paying 14%. Basically, you're making 14% more in salary than you would if you were in California. Number two is when you talk about building things and regulations. California's stranglehold here on everything they're trying to build. Look at that high speed train that was supposed to be built many years ago, it's triple the cost and still doesn't broken ground. The environmentalists, the restrictions. I'll give you an example of a guy that was absolutely brilliant. There's a, there's a small county in Nevada called Storre County, I got, maybe four or 5,000 people. This one guy is a commissioner and he said, you know what? We have all this land out here, I'm gonna go and try to get these big companies to come and build an industrial park. So he goes and he meets with Tesla, I think it was Tesla was the first one. And he says, hey, if you guys want to build out here, you can start tomorrow. I said, what do you mean? Follow the application, we got it approved already and you can start tomorrow. And they came out there, built out there. Now every major industrial place is built out there and Reno's really taking off more than Las Vegas now. And it's because they understand that a lot of these, good intended laws end up backfiring when you go too far and you don't oppose them with common sense and you have this long periods to get anything started and the cost of all that stuff. I'm surprised the A's stadium has taken this long to build in Las Vegas because you can build something very quickly there if you wanted to.
They haven't even broken ground yet, yeah. No, they were supposed to break ground, I believe in between April and June. So the, you know, part of the issue with the A's owner is just very quiet. Doesn't, doesn't talk a whole lot and that's what a lot of his criticism that he gets. But at the same time, Major League Baseball or the Oakland A's is not a public entity. The Major League Baseball owner is not a public official, so he doesn't need to, but it should help a little bit.
If you really want the, the fan base and the residents to support you, it should be more outgoing than what's going on. The guy Foley, Foley owns the Golden Knights. He did an incredible job in promoting it and getting it going. Look, I grew up an Oakland A's fan. I was Charlie Finley's biggest fan and I love those, all the mustaches and everything.
Today's episode is brought to you in part by Wonderful Pistachios. Looking for a snack that's both delicious and nutritious? Crack into a good source of protein with Wonderful Pistachios. Wonderful Pistachios is one of the highest protein nuts. Each one ounce serving has six grams of protein, giving you over 10% of your daily value. Plus, they are packed with fiber and better for you on saturated fats. A lot of the criticism that this stadium has gotten, first is stadium over schools. And the Clark County Commissioner, Jim Gibson, said there is no evidence that the baseball stadium diverts money from education and court rulings back that up as well. He said it wouldn't take a dime away from education. And the same year that SB1 passed, education actually received a large budget increase. But that's all we're hearing right now as far as proponents of the stadium is that the stadium is taking money away from education. Is there any truth to that and why would that even be said?
I know, there's not, there's not truth to that, but I'm gonna go a little bit further. First of all, Commissioner Gibson's the smartest and most well-rounded commissioner out there. He knows what he's talking about. You're looking, you look from an outside and you go, wow, if you're given the stadium, I don't know how much this one's gonna be, half a billion dollars. We could be using it in Nevada for something else, but what they don't look at is how much tax revenue that stadium is bringing in? How much tourism it brings in? You know, we spend, Las Vegas has a tourism group, I'm running a blank on it, but we give them almost 150 million.
Las Vegas Convention, you're talking about the one head by Steve Hill, right?
Yes, exactly. He does a great job. But first of all, you get, you're spending 150 million or more to advertise Las Vegas nationally and internationally. And you get the A's out here and all that, that's a lot of advertising. You've got all these home games that you could be bringing in, other teams are gonna be televising the games. So one, you get revenue when there's games because you're gonna have people that come with ticket sales. You're gonna have people that are gonna buy drinks, park, do all that stuff. Second of all, you got the advertising that it brings from the city of Las Vegas. And thirdly, there's a certain amount you pay for the enjoyment for your citizens in, in your location, whether it's building parks or building, we have a world-class performing arts center that was paid the most tax, mostly taxpaying money, some private money. But you do it because you want to have a good state type of living in the community. Look how excited this community has gotten for the, for the Golden Knights. And that's where they were with the Rebels. And how excited, you see all those people going to Raider games, even though they haven't won, wait till they win. My dad used to say, Las Vegas is a great basketball town, winter time. And he knew that, you know, you can't lose, you get people to come out to the games, but if you win some, Vegas is gonna support you. So I think there's a lot of stuff that comes along with putting that money in from, from the tax base that you get back. And there is the same argument about the Allegiant Stadium. And I said, how stupid are you guys? Because this is a little bit different. I said, this type of a stadium we don't have in town, we'll bring in the Super Bowl, we'll bring in the national championship game, we'll bring in all these things and people thought I was crazy. They've all been there now already and all the money, the attention and the advertising, it's been wonderful.
Can you explain a little bit what they mean by a publicly funded tax district?
It's not too hard to understand. It's basically, you look at the area where businesses are gonna increase their revenues because of the stadium and that's the district. And you say, because we're gonna use taxpayer money to build this, you're gonna generate more revenue for your business. We're gonna tax you to pay for a portion of this area. So this is on the strip, so I mean, that's, a lot of things could be in that could increase the tourism there. But they're gonna have an area that's drawn up and I'm not sure where that's at, that they feel that the businesses are gonna get an extra boost from the A's being there and then have them pay taxes on it. We do, we just built up in Douglas County, we built this really nice, I think it's 5,000 seat arena. We've got the Golden Knights minor league hockey team there. We did the same type of thing, we call it the development fund. But that you, you build this, this area and you take those taxes until it pays for the stadium and then the stadium pays being cleared. And that's the same thing with the tax district. Once it's paid for, it'll expire and there won't be more taxes for those businesses.
And that's what the Raiders did too, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure they did to an extent. The Raiders deal was a little shady in my opinion. They got to keep the name on the stadium, like they, and I think they actually do own it. They get the parking, they get the concessions. I'm, you know, these football players, why, why shouldn't they keep all the parking concessions? And they have, you know, these football teams name on it, it was paid, half paid for with taxpayer money. But that's another thing. Allegiant Stadium has been a great benefit to the city. And I don't think there's 1% of the residents here that are honest that will say that they're, they're sad or disappointed that that money was used for that purpose.
One thing I don't understand and I agree with everything you are saying. Why is the other side of this issue, for example, the stadiums over schools, telling a story that doesn't seem, it seems to be half the truth? What is their motivation by it? If you weren't in their shoes, do they have any type of point?
Well, look, and I don't know all the background. Sometimes you have people that are pushing it for, they want to have the union workers work in a stadium. If you don't, they go against it. But from the outside looking in, and if you don't understand all the things that you get from a stadium like this, it does sound shady. I mean, look at, you've got these owners that are making hundreds of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, some of them billions. And, and, and we're taking taxpayer dollars to pay for their stadiums that they basically, they gotta put like the Raiders, their name on it, they control it, they do this and that. That's not fair. But the sad part is if you don't do it, then you're not gonna get them into Las Vegas. And we have another thing going on right now, the same type of things happening. We have a bunch of big actors like Mark Wahlberg that are trying to turn Las Vegas into the next Hollywood. They're trying to make these big movie studios and they need a tax break to get them to come here. And now they're saying, oh wait, these movie production companies, they have all this money, let them pay for it. They're not coming if you don't do it because of it's somewhere else. So when I say give them the money, bring them out here, after a certain number of years, it's paid off and they're here and you benefit from all the stuff that they do there. Imagine having major, major movies every year come out of Las Vegas, how great that would be for the economy? And what's gonna cost you a little bit of taxpayer money that you're gonna get back a lot from the production of the movies? Same thing with the football stadium. We're gonna get a lot of this money back from ticket sales, people coming, flying into town, staying at the hotels, eating at the restaurants. A lot of this comes back.
Today's episode is brought to you in part by Monarch Money. Ever check your bank account and wonder, where did all my money go? Between dining out, online shopping and entertainment, it's easy to lose track. That's where Monarch Money comes in, your personal CFO, giving you full visibility and control over your finances. Monarch Money isn't just a budgeting app, it's a complete financial command center. You can track all your accounts, investments and spending in one place. So you stop just managing your money and start building wealth. When I started using Monarch, I realized just how much I was spending on food delivery. Now I budget smarter and save more. Instead of juggling multiple apps, you can use Monarch to check your finances, track spending and even plan long-term goals. Managing money with your partner is smoother than ever. You can track shared and personal accounts, set goals and stay on the same page without the stress. Take control of your finances with Monarch Money. Use code LOCKEDONMLB at monarchmoney.com for 50% off your first year. That's monarchmoney.com, code LOCKEDONMLB for half off your first year. This episode is also brought to you in part by Supply House. Get the supplies you need from the site made for the skilled trade. Supply House, whether you're in plumbing, HVAC or electrical work, Supply House is the reliable way to order products online. Their easy to use website is packed with helpful resources and the latest product info to help you get the job done right. Plus, with a complete inventory of over 200,000 parts from 400 plus top brands, you'll find exactly what you need, delivered fast from coast to coast. Need help with an order? Supply House offers expert support and industry-leading service. So you will always talk to a real person. And for trade pros looking for an extra edge, their free Trade Master Program offers exclusive perks like a dedicated phone line, free shipping and discounts on every order. Thousands of skilled professionals already taking advantage, now it's your turn. Join Trade Master Program today at supplyhouse.com/tm and start ordering plumbing, HVAC and electrical supplies with just a few clicks. Plus, use promo code SH5 for 5% off your first order. That's supplyhouse.com. You know, what's interesting about Vegas is your dad really had the Run and Rebel deal going in the late eighties, early nineties and.
You need to stop, they had it going in the late, in the mid to late seventies.
Excuse me.
Greatest team ever might have been in 1976, 717, that averaged 110.6 points a game without a three-point line and shot clock. And they lost by one to North Carolina, they had four Olympians and an Olympic coach on it. So you know, he's had it much longer. Everybody keeps saying the late eighties and nineties because they remember those national championship teams. But they had it for a long time.
My favorite team was the Freddie Banks team that lost the heartbreaker in, against, was it Indiana in the final four?
Lost to Indiana by three, Freddie Banks had 38 points and 10 three-pointers.
Do you remember the final eight game? They were down like 25 to Iowa and they came all the way back and it was unbelievable. That was the first year, I believe, they ever had the three-point line and.
It was, it was.
That was unbelievable.
Right now, if a team hits 10 three-pointers in a game, they think it's a lot. Freddie did that in one game himself and in the final four of all that.
Yeah, he was, he was phenomenal. Was he ahead of his time?
Oh, in every single thing. Let me tell you what's happened in college basketball. This is, this is really interesting. My dad used to, was criticized and he basically would run out of coaching because he felt that the athletes that were dominating college sports at the time of basketball and football, the two government provision sports, that they were dominated by inner-city kids that didn't have very much money. But the NCAA rules were ridiculous. They said, not only could players not work, you couldn't go, that you could only pay them a scholarship check, which was the cost for them to attend the school, the tuition and to live in the dorms. They didn't have money to pay for the laundry, they didn't have money to go out to dinner, they didn't have money to take a girl on a date. They basically would live it at a very, very low rate unless you cheated and gave them a little bit of money here and there to survive. My dad was really big on the athletes should have a higher stipend so they can live like every other college student on campus and give them a bigger stipend, but he was against paying a large sums of money. Well, instead the NCAA said, no, we're gonna keep all the money. Screw you athletes, you can't do anything to us, we're gonna keep all the money. So Ed O'Bannon goes to court, court's saying, no paying the money. Now we have the worst of all situations. We have, we're paying athletes millions of dollars, they leave it after one year. There's no loyalty to the program, there's no, there's no bonding and pride. It's, it's so bad, if the NCAA just did what my dad did, wanted them to do, they would still be around and doing a good job, but they're not. It is a number of things like that. You look at the three-point line, in 1976, I told you, they averaged 110.6 points a game because they ran without the shot clock and three-point line because they ran up and down the court, took quick shots. My dad believed if you gave a player freedom to shoot and confidence to shoot, he was gonna shoot much better than if you ran 30 seconds off the clock and at the very end you tried to get a shot up where the players were tight. Now everybody's playing that way, maybe they're playing too much that way, they jack up everything. But, but my dad was a leader in all those things.
Didn't your dad go after a different type of player when he was at UNLV compared to where he, when he was at Fresno? For example, UNLV, again, I don't recall if all those guys were McDonald's All-Americans or whatever, but I know the guys at Fresno were.
This is the thing, when my dad started coaching, college coaching, he was at Long Beach and then he went to UNLV. And my dad wanted to win, like every coach does, that's what their job is. So he felt, and he said this over and over again, I could not get the great players that were from good families away from schools like UCLA, Kentucky, North Carolina. I could get, I can get really good guys that aren't as good a players, but then I'm gonna lose and be fired. So what he said was, I'm gonna get the great players that are, you know, have problems off the court, that aren't really good students. You know, my dad wasn't, my dad's a Fresno State grad too. He wasn't very good, he took six years to graduate. He always said it about eight years and he didn't bury my mother. But, and he got trouble all the time off the court. So he went out and recruited these players that were rough around the edges. Matt Doherty, who was an assistant coach in Kansas at the time, I was at Fresno and we were close. He told me, Danny, don't take it the wrong way, we just don't recruit the same players you do. And I said, heck, I understand that. I said, that's what makes my dad so special. He takes guys that are a little bit crazy, a little bit nuts, hard to deal with and he wins with them. Now in Las Vegas, he took the same kind of players. The only problem was they weren't quite as good until the very end. So what I'm saying to you is, he took, before you got to the Larry Johnson, Stacy Augman, Anderson Hunt, that national championship team, we didn't have a lot of great players on our team. We had maybe two or three high school All-Americans. And he built around other players that were really hungry, that just were much lower than the rest of them, that had a chip on their shoulders, so when they got to play the best ones, they really competed. At Fresno, because my dad had such great success at UNLV, we brought in a bunch of guys that were great players. They were high school All-Americans, we had high school All-Americans.
Yeah, sure did.
Seven years at Fresno that we had, 19 years at UNLV. But those guys didn't have a chip on their shoulders. They were harder to get to understand what the hard work it took to be successful and the bond it took. And quite frankly, Fresno's administration suspended our players for ridiculous reasons over and over again. And that made the players not like the school and not want to stay at the school. Chase Tremaine folks came one year and at the end of one year, he said, Dan, you gotta get me out of here, I can't take the school anymore. And I started thinking, how can you have a big program where the players hate being there? And that's what, that's what happened.
Could you see this happening, let's say 30 years ago, what's happened to Vegas? I mean, no sports franchises for years now, the Golden Knights, the Raiders, the A's. You're gonna get an NBA franchise. We're talking four in 10 years. Is it just a different philosophy or, or what happened?
No, it's a town, you gotta be able to, it's gonna be supportive because of the tourism that Las Vegas relies upon. No other town has the infrastructure, the hotel rooms, the restaurants, the nightclubs. First of all, every player wants to go over, play for the Knights and play for the Raiders because one, they don't pay their state taxes. And they live in a town that has great, great nightlife, great, great food, you treat it like kings and queens for the Aces. I'm talking about the basketball Aces.
Sure.
Yeah, there's just, it's a great, great town. It's, it's, no other town could do what we're doing. They could do it over a period of time when it grows bigger and bigger like Las Vegas is, but they can't do it so quickly because, because of tourism, we can't.
Politically speaking, do cities like Oakland, the Bay Area, California, are they the ones that need to change their thinking? Or is it just, is, or is it just structured where there's nothing they can do about it?
See, I don't, I don't like what's happening because I like loyalty and the fan base. I grew up in Oakland A's. I grew up Oakland Raiders, it's Kenny Staver and Paul Littler. It's hard for me to say the Las Vegas Raiders. I, it's hard for me to say. I, I, it's hard for me to see what's happening, but that doesn't change the reality. The reality is, if the Oakland, Oakland could have kept the A's there if they helped build a stadium there. And people will come into Oakland to watch the, the A's play. There was a certain amount of civic pride by having the A's there. How much is that worth? Is it worth the taxpayer dollars to build it? Then build it. If it's not worth it, then you're not going to have it. It's, it's unfortunate. And, you know, look, look at the last company in the world that needed, I don't know how many, it was close to a billion dollars of tax benefits was Tesla. But Nevada gave it to them. They moved here. It made Story County the richest county in Nevada now.
Thank you for making Locked On A's your first listen today. For your second listen, check out Locked On Fantasy Baseball Podcast with hosts Dominic Martino and Matthew Oni. MLB Fantasy Draft Season is here. Be the most informed fan and set yourself up for a league win. Find Locked On Fantasy Baseball on YouTube or wherever you listen to your podcasts.